Looks like 504.
Okay. So, there's been a lot of things that come before us lately that we haven't done, sidewalks.
I agree.
Or public hearings.
Uh huh.
Yet we require a butter notices?
Uh huh.
So why are we requiring the butter notices if we're not having public hearings?
That should only, we should really only require those if we are gonna have it. Trouble is, we don't really have a ruling before then.
Right.
That's what that's all about. So they're only addresses and the likes that've identified who they are. They haven't been invited to a concession yet.
Well, you have to have a public hearing for me to say plan with you. Miners, you don't have to.
Yeah, yeah. These have been all miners.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay? So I don't know how to shift that without, unless we wait on that until we determine whether it's major miner, that kind of stuff.
I think the idea of having a sidewalk on the non-conforming lots is something that we might wanna think that we should do, yeah.
Yeah. Agreed. I don't argue with that at all.
But we're not even notifying butters, right?
That's right. That's what that means.
Yeah.
Something to think about as we go through these.
But it's on a minor project, so...
Yeah.
But the general public is notified.
Yeah.
Through the media, so, yeah.
I mean, like if you're putting on a deck, or the one that we had to wait for, they surveyed about the porch, and they were extending the porch. I mean, you don't need a sidewalk or public hearing for that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's within our realm of authority.
Yeah.
To say that it fell within the specs, that we're expecting of the ordinances.
Okay, I'm good.
So...
Satisfied?
Exactly.
Okay. Just look at them. We vote on it each time, so we'll just kinda take a look and break.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's see. Our purpose in this workshop really is to take a look at ordinance work. And determine who's gonna do what, those kinds of things. So welcome all. We're gonna do that. Let's see here. I have put together a little worksheet for today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's your next one. Thank you.
Yeah, and I got a few more.
Thank you.
You got one more?
I have one myself.
Okay.
Nice to meet you. I would passify it.
Good sharing it. Okay.
And the ones we're concentrating on are the three that we put in front of this.
The Ds. So those, that's, I've done, this is an update of this document.
Okay, yeah, okay.
There's more information on there. What I did is take a look at Michael's notes and the likes, and our notes, and kinda put our list together. And they're not necessarily in priority order, but probably not far from it. There's some things that have been talked about on the Select Board, and there's things we have talked about on ours. If I'm correct, the three major items that the Select Board talked about were gravel road standards, state mandated residential development, and update the marijuana ordinance. The first three? Yep. Correct?
And we also talked about the concrete cement plants and the asphalt paving plants, and that's just an update to that table.
Yep. Okay. Good. They're kind of all at top. Yep.
Yeah, the first five, yeah.
Yep, okay. And then below that, we have another bunch of potentials that we are likely not gonna work on right off, if we do at all. They're just there for referral. So we had our dimensional requirements, we have our survey requirements, we have fire prevention, which came from Jim actually, asking us to think about that. We had a note around subdivision update, and I'm not sure what I recall with the conversation around that. Camper trailer, septic requirements was Christina's. Morings, we've already had a session that kind of tipped into that when we had our short-term rental meeting and the likes. We've heard other things about that. The peddlers or mobile vendors are down the list of ways, and I even left the sledge spreading, compost spreading, because we should talk some more about that at some point.
So what?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes?
Did you get the remainder of the updates from the SLUG board meeting? Because we scratched, Morings is state issue, so that was scratched.
Yeah, the sledge.
The sledge issue?
I'm sorry?
No, Morings.
Morings, we talked about that, but for a year, maybe two.
Yeah.
And the state is working on that, so that was something that should be scratched.
And the sledge has a state statute, I think.
The sledge does too.
It does.
We were talking about Morings.
Just one thing, one thing about that. I checked with MMA on those kinds of pieces, where we have state laws and the likes. The state law, in our town, we have, we cannot essentially enforce that. It's for the state to enforce that. For us to begin to enforce any of those kinds of rules, we have to adopt them into our ordinances.
So the Morings, the game wardens?
Like, yeah, like Morings and like all...
Morings, we decided was a state issue, so that was scratched.
Yeah.
Just reiterating what we talked about.
Yeah, it's a state issue in terms of, let's see what they come up with.
I am just reiterating what we talked about in the Select Board.
All right.
So we decided Morings was being scratched, the peddlers, mobile vendors was being scratched, and the sledge, because there's state standards around that as well.
Yep. Oh, hi Paul.
Hello.
Okay, all right. Any comments?
Questions? The fire prevention...
That was just simply a comment from Jim at one of our meetings, that said that, by the way, as I look at ordinances here in Sebago, that could use some work on fire prevention.
Okay.
That's all it is. So we would have to, you know, we haven't done any work on it, or thought much about it.
Okay.
Or any research.
Phil Striker was going to look at the fire hydrant ordinance, make changes to it, and then get that back to us. We haven't seen that yet.
Okay.
That wasn't even brought up at the Select Board meeting. It wasn't a part of Michael's agenda, so...
Yeah, but it's already, it was already an ordinance that was already drawn up.
I just went, we didn't have a conversation on it at a meeting, because it was not on our agenda.
I think that we also are talking about new ideas, thinking through the last sub board meeting, we gotta kind of go further on this too.
The last Select Board meeting, we were talking about what we're headed to.
Did we discuss this now?
Yeah, but we still have the opportunity, a workshop, to talk about changes in the future, right?
I'm not kidding. What were you talking about? The, that was a fire hydrant, fire hydrant ordinance.
That's what you were asking Phil Striker about.
Yeah.
And he needs more time, I believe. He and I were talking about that. We need more time for that.
Okay.
There is minimum fire standard, minimum fire prevention standards in the ordinance currently. We could take a look at that in the future, you know, after we address the top priorities, you know?
Okay.
Something to talk about.
We'll do the same a little bit.
The other thing...
We already, I mean, it says that we have to meet NFPA 211, so we don't already follow like natural fire protection act.
So when are we gonna, when is the planning board gonna look at the stuff in workshops? Is that the idea?
I think that we're supposed to, I mean, we brought some ideas to the Select Board already. They gave back some, the ideas that we brought to them, to provide more information at their next meeting. And I think that out of those, they'd like to prioritize those, but we need to give them more information.
But I'm wondering, when are we going to do this at the planning board meeting, in the workshops?
The workshops.
Okay. What are those? Can you define those for us?
So the ones that the Select Board needed more information on were road standards, state mandated residential development in marijuana. And they wanted updates on the asphalt paving plants and cement plants.
We didn't want updates, we wanted the table updated. We didn't want updates, that's been talked about forever.
Yeah, the table would be updated.
So that was all said and done. What is it, the land use table?
Schedule of uses? Yep.
Yes, and we decided last year that that was going to go in there, just saying no, 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 in all the readings.
For the three districts, yeah?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the concrete cement and asphalt paving are absolutely that way. Very easy.
Right, it's just adding those lines, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the manager had asked that we fill out those worksheets that have been done in the past for ordinance changes, to kind of clarify for the SLUG board, why we're looking at these for ordinance changes.
And we've got the paperwork, I mean, my understanding...
I made the worksheets, just so that we can work on that today.
My understanding was, we were supposed, these were the three priorities from the Select Board.
Yep.
And we were, we were basically, we're not gonna get very fiery on the road standard. I mean, that is complicated.
That's a big one.
It's a huge one, and I'm glad we're taking it up first.
Yeah.
The rest of this discussion should be null and void for tonight, if we're gonna get started on what we're supposed to be doing. That's the way I feel, you know?
Yeah, I think we gotta do one at a time, too.
Exactly, just jump in and let's go.
Yeah.
We've got Brett here. He's the ordinance geek.
Because we have, we have till, what, February of next year or some?
It's on the bottom of the sheet.
When do, these have to start to come together, do you know?
February 10th.
February 10th?
It's on the sheet that, you know?
It's on the sheet that, I agree, the state mandated residential development stuff, we're not required to do something with for a year and a half yet. And you know that they're doing some more definition work, and to sort that all out, and that's not gonna be ready for a little while yet, so...
I think we'll be getting more guidance in January, and, but it's gonna take more than one cycle to get this through, so starting right when they provide more information in January would be best.
Yeah, because right now, what is it, September 27 or something like that?
Oh, correct.
So it was September 27?
For...
For like LE 1829 or...
Yeah, so it depends on the ordinance. For this town, we wouldn't have to have anything accepted by Townboat 2027.
That's right.
So, just how our ordinance is framed. Other towns have different timeframes, but yeah.
Yeah. My suggestion is, we don't spend much time on the state mandated residential development topic for a few months yet, until we get more information.
Yeah, it's gonna be tricky at the state level. Like you said, they're changing some of the verbiage, they're trying to make it a little bit more clear, so with it kind of being up in the air, you know, it could make more sense to just wait until that's finalized and clear, and then we actually have a document that we can go off of.
Seems like there would be problems in areas such as Sebago, where you don't have public sewer or water, you know? It's like road areas.
I think we're just chasing our tail on that, so, until a further date.
Yep.
Let's go to work.
So, gravel roads. It should be all roads, and we can set grades of roads, I guess? Because if somebody puts in a gravel road, and they pave it for their driveway, then it's not a gravel road, so...
Should we be defining what we mean by like minor roads? Because we've got roads, we've got minor roads, we've got backlot driveways, we've got homeowner roads.
Go ahead, define them.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that we need to list, so we need to list them, and then each, because I was looking online.
The standards you mentioned, Dean, are implicated when there's like a subdivision. In other words, it doesn't necessarily apply to all roads, those major and minor projects, and road standards are for when that someone comes in for a subdivision. What I think we're talking about is general, well, we lack standards, and there was, you know, we need to establish some. There are some that you said relates to the subdivisions. And then there was also a booklet that Christina had that related to state standards for gravel and dirt roads in town. So we might take that as a basis to establish gravel and dirt roads, and then other roads, you know, other roads are other roads.
Wouldn't the standards depend on, like, how long a road is, and how many buildable lots there are on that, off that road, or off?
Don't we need to define what we mean, first of all, what kind of roads are we talking about, and then we can apply it to the subdivision? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, private roads.
Exactly. Get the, get the general description of what kind of roads we're talking about.
Subdivision roads are already defined, though, correct?
Correct.
So we don't need to do subdivision roads.
Yeah, and I think this is where it might be like a little bit of the chicken and the egg, where we're trying to define something that we don't quite know or haven't really discussed yet. So, like generally, like you had mentioned, sometimes it's based on the number of dwelling units or lots that are served within there. So like some towns will do a gravel road if it's three or less. And then if it's larger, then it's maybe a private road standard. And then if it's even above another threshold that we could work on, or workshop to define, you know, then maybe it's an even larger standard.
I think what we were getting at, though, might be that depending on the length of road, how many lots there are, that when you first go in there, even if they're not, even if they're not doing a subdivision and they're, I think we need a standard right-of-way that would, that would service future development of that road. So it's like a 60-foot right-of-way, even if you're only putting in a couple of houses, if there's 20 lots or whatever down in there, you know?
Yeah, the packet from last month, it really used the Town of Raymond's street design standards as a really good example, because they have different definitions, and it probably has more than what we're interested in, you know, adopting or looking at adopting this time, like arterial roads. We're not building any arterial roads anytime soon. So like last meeting, we had talked about, like a backlot driveway, which is like the gravel road that only serves maybe one to three residences, a private street, and then a minor street. So that's kind of how, and let me back up a second. So many different towns have street ordinances, but they all call roads different things. Also in the packet from last month, you know, I provided a list of definitions from all, like some surrounding towns' ordinances, and some of them, you know, like have a definition for minor street that aren't the same, and some of them don't have a definition for minor street. But sometimes a private street is a minor street to that town. So really, what I'm hoping that we can do is agree on maybe a naming convention, and the standards that are associated with those, whether it's certain development thresholds for a number of lots or units served, and then proceed as well with actual design standards behind each of those.
Interesting.
Can I ask a question? Should the construction of the road, meaning the bed, you know, how many inches of this and that and everything else, be determined, should it be the safety equipment to get down in there, regardless of how many homes? If a fire truck has to go down, a fire truck has to go down. Therefore, that road should be, the base of that road should be safe for any emergency vehicle going down?
I know one standard that some towns use is, they put a cap on the maximum grade that's allowed for gravel, and then anything past that to a certain amount, they are required to pave it as well, so it's a little bit safer for the vehicles. That way they're not, you know, digging in ruts and things like that, so...
I think our road standards have established a certain grade, right?
Yes, they do.
Well, ours do.
Yes.
What about the potential for a road? So we've got a guy who wants to put a house in at the end of a road. I really don't know how to do this, but if he is the last lot in and has a right-of-way, there's a potential for 100 other house lots in here. And if we accept the road as a, as a town road, or accept those lesser standards for like a driveway, what is our liability there for these other houses that could manage?
Well, what we've done in the past is, then if he builds it up to the standards mentioned in our ordinance, then it can be accepted as a town road by a vote of the selectmen, but it has to be brought up to the standards mentioned in our ordinance.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I didn't mean, a town, we would accept it as a town road, I'm sorry, I misspoke. But a qualified road that satisfies our standards, you know?
She's got the booklet that's provided by, you know, produced and provided by whatever it is, the state ecological.
The D, yeah.
DEP, and that would seem to me to be the basis of any standard for at least private roads in the town. And if they wanted to produce a road that could eventually be taken as a town road, they would have to meet the standards of the board.
We have all those road definitions in our, in our ordinance book, anyway.
Not really.
We have it for road, private road, public road, definitions in the back. They're not very, they're not very good definitions, they need to be updated. It's very basic, but...
And I think this is where, you know, a street ordinance or road ordinance, or you know, whatever we wanna call this, could really offer some clarity. Because I know too, in our ordinance, it kind of uses street, road, lane interchangeably, and so I think, you know, consolidating it to one standard term that we're using frequently, that way everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
That can really solve that. To your point, I know there's a couple of different tools that we could use in scenarios where if there's an existing road, and at the end of it, there's future development that occurs. If it's a private road, in theory, you know, there's an HOA that has been formed that has maintained it, like that kind of thing, or there's, or it's a public road. But if the development happens at the end of it, there's a couple of tools that we could put in the ordinance. One, that's definitely not the most popular, but it would be the HOA's responsibility to fix up that stretch of road, and then the developer would construct their portion of road on that backlot. Or usually, it's at the expense of the developer to bring whatever access road that is up to that standard that is required for whatever threshold of dwelling units are served. If that makes sense.
I mean, it's reasonable to think that any land will eventually be developed, so I think that we should start with that 60-foot right-of-way on any new road that's put in, there should be, I believe, you know, that has a certain amount of land associated with it. I think you have to do that, because otherwise, like you're saying, you start off with a narrow private road, now you're gonna put a public road at the end of it?
And this is, in theory, where like a street ordinance would kind of come into play. It's kind of, you know, that long-range planning effort of looking at what's around, you know, if it's, if there's land that's available that maybe somebody wants to split up into three lots, but it's surrounded by land trust, you know? It probably makes sense for them just to do like a backlot driveway that's gravelled, because that'll never turn into a public road, that'll go through the land trust and that kind of thing. So I think it depends a little bit on the context of what's surrounding. There's also, I think DOT would also recommend like limiting curb cuts as well, so we don't want a bunch of, you know, private roads every, you know, 50 feet coming off of a larger road as well. So that's where we can kind of look at some of these standards as well, and look at...
Okay, can I look at that?
This is from last month.
Is our ordinance, is it, has to be 400 feet between driveways or something like that? Is that what our ordinance says? That you have to have 400 feet between driveways in those situations we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. But more, though, for the long range, though, where those curb cuts do lie, you know, is there sufficient right-of-way, you know, if they wanted to extend the road down the road, if there's suitable land behind them, I think, so...
I think we're getting off course here. First, you're saying to try to consolidate what we mean by roads.
Right.
We have lanes, ways, roads.
Right.
Blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And working about curbing and driveways 400 feet.
Yeah.
That's our target. So let's go back to trying to, what wording do we want to use to explain what we mean by a road? Do we mean by a way?
Well, exist, let's think of it like with a, with a non-conforming lot.
I don't wanna go there.
No, 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 just listen. So you've got these existing private roads that are narrow, they don't have a 60-foot right-of-way, blah, 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 blah. They're kind of like a non-conforming road, right, at that point, but they're grandfathered like a non-conforming lot.
Exactly. We can't change them, they're grandfathered.
Correct.
So we have to live with them.
Right.
But we're trying to write...
But you don't create new ones.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, is write the ordinance, what do we mean? Define our, if we say street, or if we say road in Sebago, does that mean, does that mean a private road? Does it mean an HMO, whatever, HOA?
Yeah.
Does it mean a lane? I think we have to start there. What is the word that we wanna use?
Well, the definition.
Give us the definition of road that we were really dealing with.
I know, we have to decide.
What is, is it an artery?
Yeah, I mean, like the arterials are like, you know, your interstates, your incredibly large roads, and that's not something that's really feasible.
What would we deal with in this town?
So...
Such as?
Last month, like we talked a little bit about, but I think what we could break it down as is really three different types of roads.
Go ahead.
It would be like our, Town of Raymond calls it a backlot driveway, but essentially it's a gravel road that would serve up to three lots, three dwelling units.
What does Raymond call it? A gravel road?
A backlot driveway.
Backlot driveway is three or less? Okay.
And then the next tier up would be a private street. And that would serve four to 10 units.
Are we calling it a private street or a private road? Are we, you say we're gonna consolidate streets and roads?
Yeah, and I think this is something where, this is where this comes into play, right? We can kind of take all these different words, it all kind of mean the same thing, and just be clear and consistent here. And then the next tier up after that would be a minor street. Because I don't believe, you know, the town's really constructing collector roads either. Those are kind of...
So a minor street according to...
So over 10?
So what would a PE to be defined as? Private easement. How would you define a private easement? Because that's my road.
Is it, is it aid?
I think roads actually, in the...
No, it's a dirt road.
So it'd be a dirt road, does it serve, I'm assuming it serves more than three lots?
Oh, God, yes.
Twenty, over 20 homes.
Yeah, so I mean, and there's another definition that could be added in there as well. I think it was the Town of...
Is it private road, public easement?
Yeah, I think it was, um...
Private street or private road?
Private road.
Easy name, private street.
Yeah, I think it was the Town of Standish that had a private maintenance winter road. So I think that's probably the most closest aligning term, from what I'm hearing, in what is actually like used for the road. Was that accurate? I think that's pretty accurate.
It is maintained and only by the town, so it's private, easy name, winter road.
So which names are making, okay.
Right, yeah.
I thought you meant we weren't here.
Oh, yeah, not like a snowbird type road, yeah. So the, is that accurate, would you?
I would think, yeah, I would think so. Now, what if we have an area where it becomes more full-time? Just thinking of adjustments-wise, because that's our road.
The town may need it full-time.
Yeah, exactly. So how many residents, full-time residents, would it constitute for it to be a full-time, where it would be taken care of by the town?
Well, and I think this is, I guess probably what has initiated this, this entire ordinance right, because we need to make sure what we call things moving forward, we're consistent with, and we actually have a standard for.
Right.
You know, anything previously existing upon adoption of this ordinance would be grandfathered anyways, so I don't know, unless there's improvements being made to it, that we would necessarily need a definition for, you know, a lot of these other existing things that may or may not ever get included.
Our definition in our ordinance for a private road is a thorough fair or way designated for private use and maintained by a property owner or group of property owners.
Is that a private way?
Private road, private road.
No, it's a private road.
A private road?
Yep.
Okay, but...
We don't, we don't have private way in our definitions.
Well, there's a private way off our PE.
This is what I'm seeing. We better get all these roads down.
Unless it's undershore land zoning, let me look.
It shouldn't be, because I don't want, yeah, it's not sure.
Your whole road is private.
Where a PE coming in, all our roads are PE, but there's a private way off our PE.
But that whole road is private, that's why you signed an easement. The town doesn't own any of it.
The town maintains it.
Right, this winter maintenance. But it's a private road, for the sake of our discussion. I, I don't know.
I understand it myself.
Yeah. Yeah, cause that, that's a really tricky situation where technically, yes, it is a, it's a private road.
Private road, public easement allows the town to plow the road for busing and that's, that's why they started all that. And then, and then I think the state used to kick in some money to help with that, kick into the town. I don't know if they still do that or not.
What's, you know, the question is what standards apply to those roads?
Right. Well, so I think for, for clarity, I think it'd be one, first to agree on a term. Can we just call it a road just to make sure we're being consistent?
I don't think street will pertain to Tobago. We're talking about roads.
Yeah, I mean, I think generally when people think of a street, they might think of something a little bit more.
We have, we have.
So I have a, I have a question. So. Private road.
Yep.
Four to 10 units. Back lot driveway, zero to three units, right? And minor street subdivision.
Correct. Well, depending on the, the size of the subdivision too, they might, if it's a smaller subdivision, they might need to use the private road standards. Just based on the threshold. Because anything, what's it gonna be five units soon from the state statute that's technically a subdivision? But it's not above 10, so. But this is probably where the street standards most commonly would apply is through subdivisions, through new development.
So we think ours go five for a minor street subdivision? Up to five lots?
I don't know.
Less than.
Less than five?
Less than five.
Okay, so five or more would be a minor street. Otherwise we're changing everything in our ordinance.
Correct. On private, okay, are we changing street to road, right? Just to have Tobago was concerned?
We're, we're going, you said we're going to use the term road now for everything, correct?
I, I think if that's what everybody's okay with, I think just to make sure we're talking.
For the sake of, sake of this discussion, everything would be.
In theory, in my head, like they, they kind of mean the same thing, but, but I think just saying road is a little bit more clear, so.
So if we have, if a private road is four to 10. A minor road.
Would be a subdivision. These are houses that are, they're not subdivisions, right?
On, on a private road? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Not a sub, okay, that's okay, not a subdivision. And then minus, minor road is going to be for subdivisions five or greater.
Right.
Okay.
Is that correct, Brad?
Yeah, so just to.
That's what we have now.
Back up here, so the three, zero to three would be back lot driveway. Back lot road. And the four to 10 would be a private road. And then anything greater than 10 would be minor road.
No, wait a minute. It's always said. Private road is four to 10.
Yep.
Right? And then David, you're saying that a minor road is for a subdivision of five or greater according to our ordinance?
Yeah.
So that's not what you were saying.
So actually, to their point out there, a private road can serve an unlimited number of units. And it does currently.
Right.
More than just 10. If we, if we start, if we start calling streets roads, we're gonna have, we've got a lot of changes to make in our ordinances.
Well, that's why we're gonna do this is because it's.
I think what the gentleman's suggesting is that we use them interchangeably. And that, don't get caught on that, but establish three levels of standards that you're, whatever you're proposing needs to fit into.
And I think there's, sorry, I think there's two things on that. One thing that we could do is in the definitions also include, you know, this definition includes like road is used interchangeably with street, lane, or whatever. That way we may not have to go through and change every single word over. But two, I would also offer, you know, I do this in the other towns that we work with too. You know, diving in and like redlining the ordinance and like showing you where all those changes would be, kind of thing, so. You know, it's kind of the general role of a planner, but I'm happy to, to do that as well, so.
Interchangeable part works better and easier.
Okay, but that comes back to if we're considering a minor road is, or subdivision five or greater. Now a private easement road.
Oh, not easy.
Public easement.
Public, private. Okay, so our, our definition for minor streets, local streets, which are used primarily for access to a budding residential, commercial, and industrial property. That's, that's, that's under streets, minor streets. That's, we, our ordinance is, don't give your big definition out.
No, and again, this is kind of where something like this really could benefit the town, right? Is offering a lot more clarity, cause you know, that could mean almost anything like. That to me sounds similar to what other towns would call like an industrial or commercial street. You know, where it's built to like a little bit of a heavier design based on the, you know, the, the load of trucks and the, the frequency trucks that are coming through. And that's really not something that's existing really prevalent in this town.
Right, that would be major, major, yeah. A lot of that's major streets. We do have a definition for major streets there too. Some time ago, you were talking about redlining some existing, would you use strictly our ordinance to do that with? Or would you pull some of that out of Raymond's, for instance?
Well, I guess it depends on kind of, you know, what we agree on tonight and kind of the, the general direction as well. What I frequently do is I'll have a Word document and I won't necessarily rewrite the entire ordinance in a Word document. It's a lot easier to just kind of take snapshots of certain paragraphs and just really high level capture those differences. Usually I'll strike through and read, you know, what's going up, being removed, and then bold and underline in blue to kind of show what the new language looks like.
That's basically what we did with our ordinance changes.
Yeah. It's pretty, it's pretty common in practice, but yeah, it's, it's a lot more clear to see where those changes are at, so.
Christina mentioned at an earlier meeting that she had some notion of minimum standards for these roads. You did mention that, you know, what the town maintenance road should be.
Oh, the PE roads?
Yeah.
I do, I don't have it with me though. I'm sorry.
That's right. I didn't know you mentioned it and had some ideas, that's all.
Is that the one that Sean gave us for the, that road up on his land up at, on Fatu?
It may be, yeah, it may be. I think it was 18, the, the accessway needs to be 18 feet wide. And it kind of follows the same standards, I think, as the, the back lot driveway.
It was a little less than, than what our minor road was, that he was asking for on that, on that road into his land.
He may have been asking for the gravel road standards.
But he had a booklet that he'd use.
He was.
Yeah.
So that's a mention.
And we don't have it, so.
Could we have copies of that for the next week?
That's a good man who wants to have.
The gravel road book?
You think we need that?
I.
As a standard?
Yeah, we should have it. We should copy it.
No, no, is it, it's not a big one either. What's pertinent to what we have to do for these ordinances?
Yeah, we can get out of that information.
Yeah.
I think that would be good information to have, Christina.
Yeah, the other thing that's also worth noting, this applies really to almost any ordinance is even though the state has resources and draft ordinances out there and standards for different things, the town is still responsible for adopting their own standards. You know, the, the state doesn't really want any liability. So what they don't want to see is, you know, referencing state law or statute because that kind of, you know.
That's kind of what I was getting at earlier.
I mean, it could be copied verbatim, you know, and, and adopted by the town. Really, we still have to go through that process of adopting.
M M A takes the same stance, pretty much.
It has a lot of good stuff about what the grade should be, what the curve should be, what crossings of streams should be. So it has a lot of stuff that we don't need to necessarily develop independently, but could, could use.
Yeah, I mean, there's no need to.
Reinvent the wheel.
The wheel. Somebody, some scientist sat down and came up with this stuff and suggested this, how you go about it.
So question is, what's the problem? Why are we doing this?
Well, that's a good question. Exactly. Why are we doing this?
As a practice, unless the code officer.
We currently have two standards in the ordinance and they don't really fit the character of the town.
In what way?
They both require pavement. They both require sidewalks and shoulders.
Those are more to be applied when someone's putting in a subdivision of some sort. I'm not sure they necessarily should apply to these private roads we're talking about, which basically seems to me it's a finite problem that might come down to the road person going down with the road, you know, the road association person and saying maybe one or two trees could go here and there, maybe a rock could be moved or something. To, to make it more passable.
Couldn't substitution for say sidewalks and some of those other requirements, impact fees be, be applied for, for, for the future? Where, where it is needed in the town?
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, anything like that could be appropriate for this as well. But yeah, another thing I would also add in terms of a potential challenge would be liability for the town as well. You know, if there's, if the town is agreeing to maintain these roads, but you know, there's not a standard and, you know, or there's no private association, HOA, whatever group that's maintaining these roads actively, it has opened the town up to some responsibility and liability, so.
So I think all new roads, all new developments, the HOA you mentioned, that's key. And we have required that, that there be some on all roads, so that's, that's one thing. I'm, I'm still stuck on the, the private road.
Well, we've never required sidewalk.
Four, four to 10 units. But what if the potential down there is for 80 units or 100 units?
In the town, we did have a 60 unit one, but they abandoned it.
Yeah, I think this is where talking about right of ways being required and making sure there's a line. Like in Raymond, for example, they both require 50 foot right of ways for both minor and private roads. And so that kind of places, you know, if there is future development, they already have the right of way established. So if they're going to develop down the road, then it's the developer's responsibility to bring the rest of that road up to that standard, that higher tier, whatever that looks like, so.
And we do, subdivisions, developments containing 20 lots or more, having an area in excess of 35 acres, you need two ac- access roads to those. So we do, I mean, we do have some stuff in our ordinances, but I mean, yeah, they.
I think the new developments are, are easy, but it's the, it's the slow creep. Like at the end of this private road, there's five lots, five, five, six acre lots. So now that's 12 houses at the end of this road. And so I want to divide mine in half and build the house. He wants it now, all of a sudden we got 12 more houses on this skinny private road. So that's.
Yeah, that's the problem.
The passables to five.
So, so whose, whose burden is it to improve that road? And I never, as a owner of one of those roads, because my lot wasn't developed, I never joined this HOA and was, because I had no reason to. And it's not, I still have that right of way over that road, you know what I mean? So those are the things we gotta think about when we set the standards anyway. Is that a 15 foot road with a potential for 50 lots is not adequate on a private road.
Yeah, so they have to set up a HOA before they can develop these roads.
But I'd like to get back to Christina. This has been a, a burr under your saddle. That's why you're asking that this be.
Yeah, they don't, they don't know how to direct people.
Okay, could you give us an example, Christina, that, something you've had to deal with recently?
So it was actually what, the Sean Bean one? We were, he came, we brought him to you guys because we weren't sure that, how to direct him because he wants to put that five lot subdivision down there. And we don't, he wanted to keep it gravel. And our standards only allow the pavement in certain widths. And that, you know, we had asked the attorney a while back if waivers were accepted. She said yes, but then she thought again and realised that it probably wasn't a good idea to use the waivers. So we're stuck with these two standards that we just don't have any flexibility with. I'm sorry, these two stand, yeah, we have the two standards that we just can't work with.
We should have discussed that.
So you're looking for clarification?
We need a variety of standards.
You want a variety of standards?
Right, and that's pretty much what you're doing. You're creating it based on the number of homes that will be accessed along the road.
Now.
We shouldn't identify names at this point, but.
What, what do you think it should be based on? The potential for the homes down there or the actual homes?
Well, what they're proposing, I think, is the only thing that we can go off of at the time.
Well, what if, what if it was undeveloped? And he could probably, or, or somebody could put more homes down there.
Well, what he's explaining is, you know, you, you base it off of what the proposed development is at the time. And when a new development is proposed, then we, we have those, those standards that they then need to bring it up to at the expense of the developer.
The guy just said, what if it's not a developer? What if it's four individuals who own these lots or, or six individuals who own individual lots and they divide them?
That individual is the developer, right, Brad?
Yeah, so I mean, in that specific scenario, I think it's a little bit tricky because it depends on a couple of different factors, right? Like one, is there an HOA? And two, you know, is it going to trigger subdivision? Because you know, if it's past all the, the timing things and you know, if it's just a singular lot split and it may not, and if it's a bunch of independent lots that are doing this, then I think like you're saying, there, there is an issue.
And you can't burden those lot owners with building a, whatever, a whole road.
Yeah, and I mean, and I think, you know, an, an example is, you know, if there's, I think it's one thing if there's like a phased development where you know that there's future things coming down the road like soon, like it's all part of that plan. Versus, you know, if there's just a couple, let's say 100 acres back behind the subdivision that, that may get developed, but we don't know. Cause it's not part of that proposal, you know, we can't hold them to it. We can't force them to to build to that higher standard just because of potential. We can make standards that will plan for it, right? Like increase right of way, that, that's, you know, the same standard. You know, different, you know, like I'm looking at like, like some of the similarities here, you know, the, the grading. You know, if you want to require sidewalks or not, things like that. That way, you know, it isn't so segmented, like it doesn't, like you get, you don't look at it and it looks weird. Like you don't have gravel and then a smaller paper and then a larger one, so.
If you have, if we have a certain width for any right of way, like you said, 15 feet. All right? And then if that, if that road is greater than five or greater than 10, then it would have to come up to the next level. Could we write an ordinance that way to cover ourselves? And that takes into, into account your ideal potential down the road.
That, that doesn't address individual lots though, like, like an individual homeowners or, or a split every five years or any of that stuff?
Using the road, anybody on that road, if the road is supporting or is used by greater than, let's say 10. All right? Then no matter who's dividing it, then the road has to come up to the next level. Can we write it that way? That's our ordinance. That's what we wanted in our term.
Yeah, yeah.
Christina, if, if there's, if you live at that end of that road and you want to divide your lot and now you've got, you're over the 10, so you have to go to the next level of road? That makes your property worthless. Because nobody can afford to up, no individual can afford to upgrade that road for two lots.
Puts all the burden on the last developer, yeah.
I think another thing that we could do is obviously add a waivers section. So if there was somebody looking to do that style of thing, obviously waivers can't be granted by the code officer. That would be something that would have to go before you folks in the planning board. But there, there's always that round as well, where in that scenario, if it's like not financially feasible whatsoever and it, it is placing a large burden on them. You know, they would, the, the code officer would have the jurisdiction to elevate that application up to the planning board for review for that waiver request. And then, you know, if you guys, if it met that criteria, you know, that you see fit. And then it would get passed and then they would be able to do that.
So should we look at several other towns and see what their ordinances are?
Look at the stuff here. It's pretty straightforward. And I hope for, if you want to put in a new, not pre-existing, but a new private street, 50 feet for a private road. That minimum street that might be taken by the town, 50 feet. I mean, the standard, suggested standards are here. What's a B L D?
Yeah, so this is from Raymond. This is just an example of the content that they have. The B L D is a back lot driveway. It's like someone to our, our gravel road or back lot road type thing.
Basically depending on how big the road is.
Basically depending on how big the road is, somewhere between 80 and 50 feet, it's suggested as a minimum right of way width, at least here. When there's issues and there's.
It's the stuff that you just mentioned.
And it talks about the amount of grades and stuff. So, you know, what the appropriate grades on any particular thing could be.
Okay, so I'd like to kind of stop the discussion on this for a little bit here.
Can I just ask one question before you guys?
Yeah.
Are you proposing lots for dwellings?
This is where it gets a little tricky.
It may not be 12, maybe 36.
It's a great point.
Yeah, that is a good point.
That was my idea, that was my question, because I asked her, like, how are you gonna handle that?
I think.
Potential lots? No?
Yeah, I think it's dwellings.
Oh, existing, because you can put a new, you can put another dwelling on there.
Yeah.
So how does that, what does the state have in place for any of this? Like, I'm just curious, I don't know, I haven't read it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if you're basing on the intensity to use the frequency, I think the most appropriate one would be dwellings, right?
Right.
Because if there's a lot that has a, you know, if there's five lots that all have duplexes.
So then, so then it would be based on what district this road's in? Because, because the acreage requirement is different in all the districts.
But every district, every dwelling you have, you can assume two dwellings on that or, or an attached dwelling.
At least one required by only 2003d correctly.
So Brett, how can you help us between now and our next meeting?
So I, I think one thing that helps first is we have some direction and prioritization from the select board, right? So we know where our priorities are. I think based on this discussion tonight, there are a couple of things that I can put together in terms of some sample definitions, some sample standards that we could look at adopting. And I think that can kind of help push the discussion forward, you know, do we like this? Is it too much? Is it not enough? What's missing? And then we can kind of, you know, continue to work on these and develop them over time.
Okay, good. And we should all go to school a little bit on this document that was passed out last meeting. That's a pretty good document.
It's hard to get started.
Yeah, it is hard to get started.
It's, it's a very steep learning curve. It's, it's very tricky and it can get pretty technical. But the, the payoffs are massive and it really does help protect the town in terms of liability and also just, you know, future land use planning, right? You know, like what do we want this town to look like is, is the hard bit, so.
Yep. That's it. And do we have a couple of folks on the board that want to kind of take leadership on this one, to collect their notes and pull it together? If we try and do this all as a whole committee all the time, we won't make that much progress. I know this for sure. It usually takes some individual initiatives to start to pull it together. So you're, you're, you're asking if, if we can, have you already got the information from the different communities anyway?
I do, yeah. So this is, in, in last month, the report that I kind of prepared included, Raymond is probably the best example, just because I'm, I work very closely with them, most familiar with it. It also includes definitions from other towns it has in here, Raymond, Casco, Standish and Poland. So like I said, I can start workshopbing those definitions a little bit there as well.
Garrett has that list, you have that?
I have, yeah, I have the copy of the law.
Okay. You gonna do it? Yeah, I'll look at it. You wanna do it? You guys are gonna do that? All right. And while we're talking about this, who wants to update the marijuana ordinance to move on that one? To coordinate it. Just means taking a look at it. Christina's gonna try and get us some more information on that anyway. But then it's just putting it into our framework, our template.
I'll work with Christina on that.
Do that as well, get some information. Add them and make some suggestions.
I'll try to be quick on this because I know we have some other stuff to tend to. But the marijuana stuff is a little bit trickier because it is a state process. So I think first, you know, it sounded like last meeting, we were talking about what direction does the town want to go? Do we want to opt in or opt out? And both require their own very regimented state-defined process. So, and that is something that needs to be put to town vote, whether the town wants to opt in or opt out. So those kind of discussions, you know, they could happen here, but I think they are probably more appropriate at this point in time at the select board level in terms of, you know, what is the community saying, what do they want, you know, do we want to opt in versus do we want to opt out? And then in Raymond, for example, they're an opt-out community. And the ordinance that they have adopted was a little bit out of line, out of statute. So we, as consultants, have been working with the state department to make sure the language that we're proposing, one is still legal, but two kind of matches the, I guess the challenges that the town is facing.
When you say opt out, you're saying Raymond doesn't allow.
Correct. So that one's a little bit trickier where, you know, there's, there's work that can be done. There's probably, there's a guy at the state level, his name's Vern, he's a really good contact, he does this stuff all the time. So I could pass that information along to you Christina as well, put you in contact with him, because I think he'd be really great to just provide some more resources and information.
Okay. You know, in terms of a little progress on it though, the next month here, Merrell actually submitted a possible survey that we could submit to the town. That was generated via AI. But it's not bad, actually, when you take a look at it, so a very reasonable survey. And so I could get that out to the team anyway, so you can all take a look at it, particularly to Kena, so you can start to look at that. So that's a possibility of sending that up to get some input from the town upfront.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, like I said, you know, in theory, that's happening, that direction's happening at the select board level. So, you know, if they're the ones facilitating that, those conversations and evaluating that feedback, then that'll help from them to give direction to us in terms of ordinance development, so.
I hope they have nay, the age on that, that survey. Because I think age is going to make a difference whether it's yea or nay.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay. So you're suggesting really that the select board kind of for now take the lead on this?
In the interim, I think some progress that could be made. One is I'll share the contact information with Christina and put you in touch with Vern and kind of see what information he can share. I'm sure he's got some resources and packets that he can send your way that we could forward on to the board members just to do some research.
Okay. Yeah, I know. Very good, and.
Dwellings or something.
Okay, very good. And I'll be sure to pull up the concrete cement plants and asphalt paving plants information once again and take a look at that.
All we gotta do is change.
That's it for now.
All we got to do on that is change it in the use table.
Yeah.
What are you looking up then?
I just got, I want to pull up our notes on that, because we have them last time around and see what it looks like. Yes, that's really what it is.
We already worked on that.
I know, we didn't give it time.
Remember, we had to change something.
Time is of the essence.
Okay, I think that's it for now. Let's close the workshop as of 2:00 after. And let's, let's take a five minute break, if folks are willing, and then we'll start the meeting. Hey, welcome to a planning board meeting, September 9th, 2025. I would like to call this meeting to order, the time is 6:08. Yes, there it is. Okay, we'll take roll call first, those board members here in attendance, Paul White, Tina Van Ness here, Dave McCarthy, Dave Welch here, and myself, Bob Liberty, chairperson. Let's do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also want to acknowledge the town staff present, we have Christina Robinson here, code enforcement officer, we have Brett Winkin, Winkin, is that correct?
You got it.
Winkin, for town planning, and Garrett Jones is executive secretary. Okay. This is a public proceeding, not a public hearing, and unless the planning board specifically votes to go into executive session, anyone here has the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits or materials that are presented. Please notify myself if you are unable to hear or see. The board works from a published agenda, which is available tonight by the signup sheet. Does everybody have an agenda, a fine one? Okay, great. All right. So our agenda this evening includes under old business, 435 Anderson Road, which is an application for the proposed demolition reconstruction of a single-family dwelling while retaining the existing foundation on a non-conforming lot. And then we have some new business, which is 8 Valley Lane, which is an application for a mobile mechanic business. We also have on 74 Safe Harbor Road, a pre-application meeting for proposed addition to a structure on a non-conforming lot in the Shoreland Zone. We have 503 Sebago Road as a pre-application for a proposed bunkhouse within the Shoreland Zone between, beyond the 100 foot buffer zone. And we have a pre-application for proposed demolition of existing structure and construction of a new family dwelling on a non-conforming lot at 22 Sebago Road. That's our agenda for this evening. Any other correspondence? We already stacked it on the tables in terms of what we have, terrific. All right.
We might have some additional stuff coming in, like as applicants come up.
Okay, okay, that's fine. All right, review of minutes.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes of August 12th, planning board meeting as presented.
I'll second that. I have one question on that. Come on, as soon as I get to it. I think that when we were talking about, let's see, which was it? When we were talking about 435 Anderson Road, we had changed our conversation around this at the end. In fact, David had brought that up. And it had to do with that, yeah, it's a non-conforming lot thing, where we were trying to confine where the stairs could go and where the chimney could go and the likes. And we ultimately decided that that was okay, that that still fit within the guidelines of non-conforming.
Well, actually, in fairness, I sent an email shortly after the meeting, I sent an email to you, 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 everybody on the board, saying I made a mistake when I required them to move the stairs because they were, appeared to be within the 15 foot setback. And so it didn't happen during the meeting, but it happened after. And I did it in an attempt to code or plan or could contact these folks and let them know, so.
That happens? Yeah, okay. All right, so maybe we don't need to update that.
I don't think, maybe that should be.
Well, the question would be, is the homeowner or the applicant happy with, with plan number two? Are they here?
With plan number two?
Plan number two, would you, would push the stairs closer to the house?
We did change the drawings, the client is happy with that.
Yeah, yeah. And you're good with that change?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. So are we amending? So do we amend?
Well, wait a minute. What was that, how wide was that random? Do you remember? Was it four feet?
It should be four feet, yes.
So either way, the new plan or the old one, but we should be, we should be satisfied with that, either one, whatever the one. The two things I asked to see have been provided, drill well location and set up.
Well, we get that. In other words, if you want to use plan one, you could use plan one, if you want to use plan two, you could use plan two, they're both within the sideline setbacks.
Could you stop? We have the motion.
Yes. Do we have to make, make a change to it? Because that actually is what was said, right? It was after we came. Okay. Um, let's see, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion to accept the minutes? Okay, motion passes. Are there any questions from folks in the audience here not related to an application before we get started? Okay, great. All right, so we're gonna move right into our old business then and, and talk about 435 Anderson Road, application for the proposed demolition reconstruction of a single-family dwelling while retaining the existing foundation on a non-conforming lot. Make motion that the application is complete if the town planner is so designated? All right.
Yep, I second.
Okay. Any, any, okay, let's vote on that? Somebody even favor? Okay. We're moving to substantive review.
Did I make the motion that we move into substantive review?
I'll second that motion. Okay, on the four? Okay. Okay, any questions before we get into our list? First, we have to see if those additions were included.
Provided us with the checklist.
What are the materials you have to show us this evening?
We have updated the site survey. President have updated here the existing well location, apply for property setbacks. And the architectural drawings are updated.
Yep. Some new drawings right here, yeah.
Well, it was where, right here.
Okay, yeah, all right. So we have the well location, any other things that were there that? All good? There isn't, there isn't any drainage problems on that lot?
No. Not at the moment.
Okay, great. All right. All right, so I think we can move into our checklist. The voting matrix. Do we have that? Let's see, did we have that? Everybody have the voting matrix? All ready? Okay, buffers, screening, landscaping and natural features?
Good, I'm good.
All good? All good? Let me ask upfront on this one, do we want to individually vote on each item? I, I think we just go right down the line, just like we just did. Okay.
I think if we have a discussion, we should vote.
Okay, discussion, all right. Okay, good, let's keep going. Burden on municipal services, not applicable, not a problem, okay. Congestion, unsafe conditions?
Not a problem.
Not a problem there either, I agree. Groundwater protection? Looked at the well. It's indicated there's no, no groundwater problem, there's no problem.
Not, not the water.
With that?
No issue with the water.
Okay, hazards and nuisances? Good, not a problem, good, okay. Impact on neighboring properties?
No change.
No change, very good. Off-street parking and loading? No change there either. Open space?
No change.
No effect on that. Outdoor displays or storage? Not applicable, not applicable. Proper operation, a proposed use? Same there. Any public health, safety and welfare influences there? No, don't think so. Scenic areas, natural beauty? Scenic areas, natural beauty? Any issue with changes there?
No change, yeah.
Okay. Shoreland vegetation, visual access?
Okay.
Okay. Soils? Impact on soils?
Okay.
Okay. Any special features? Not that we've seen. Yep. Traffic implications?
Not a problem.
Okay. Utilities?
They're the same.
They're the same, okay. Round waste disposal?
All right.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Fees paid, those kinds of things? Yep, all set?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
I make a motion that we approve unanimously our site plan approver matrix for this project.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Good luck.
Make a motion.
Good luck.
Then we approve this project?
I'll second that motion.
Second that? Okay, all in favor?
Your business.
Good. Okay, thank you. So, new business now. This would be 8 Valley Road, an application for a mobile mechanic business.
Pre-application hearing, is this?
Yes, pre-application. No, this is not pre-application.
No, this is not pre-application. It's an application.
I think I must have mistaken. I must have already done a pretty long time.
Oh, it is pre?
This is pre.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, hang on one second. So this is a pre-application as well?
Yeah.
So does anybody have a conflict of interest regarding this particular application on the board?
No.
Paul?
No, where is this located?
Okay, very good.
8 Valley.
All right.
8 Valley.
So this is a pre-application meeting to determine whether the application is a major or minor site plan review and request escrow and an application fee be paid by the applicant. Have fees been paid?
It is valid.
Okay. In each instant, instance, it is, by the way, this is for all the pre-application ones. We're going to have to do in a moment or two. In each instance, it is the burden of the applicant to demonstrate compliance with provisions of all applicable municipal ordinances and state law. Would presenter please stand and give us your full name in a moment and state your affiliation to this application? Please remain standing while the board account staff is invited to ask questions or provide comments, concerns, or requests to the applicant or applicant's representative regarding the project being reviewed. So would the applicant or representative come forward? Hi there.
Hello.
And you are?
Daniel from the.
Okay, very good. So want to talk to us about this?
Sure.
Okay.
Just give us a brief overview.
Brief overview, yeah, just going to like on location services, whether it's motorcycles, power sports, something like that, campground, golf carts, they can portate my service. Go to them.
Do you intend on doing work on the app, the customer's site?
On the customer's site, yeah.
Yeah. And you'd be doing any work in your garage?
Anything moderate, like not, it's not a regular thing. Most of it's just storage.
I was wondering, so I'm assuming you're changing oil and such?
Correct, yep.
Do you have a company that you deal with as far as disposing with the oil?
Yeah, so I've done it two different ways. One is GafTech. The other one is I donate it to people that use it for heating oil.
So you have a container that you put the oil and they come pump it out?
Yep, or with, for instance, a guy involved when I dropped off oil in, we just switch containers.
I guess, where, what part of Towns Valley Lane is?
It's the next road up from the transfer station.
Okay.
Above the transfer station?
Correct, yeah.
And when you're working on vehicles and draining the oil out of them, do you have any sort of medium that you put between the vehicle and the ground to capture any oil that may get loose or?
Yeah, so most of the time it's on a lift, like a freighter lift to someone's house for.
Or you have the scissors left you can bring and bring in yours?
It's a motorcycle lift, so it's like a big table lift, basically.
Oh, yeah.
So A, it's on there, doesn't really go to the ground. B, also using absorbent pads.
Okay.
Like we've done the shows at Laconia, twenty plate week, did that, and Sturgis, and we were compliant with all things.
Okay. Is this a sketch of the garage, is that?
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Okay.
There's a pre-existing house on the property, and then there's a garage behind the house?
It's actually technically the first floor of the house. It's a split level house, so the first floor is the garage.
The level is around the house.
Okay, split level, okay.
Couldn't figure out where the garage was.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
There won't be an increase in the footprint or anything of that, so it doesn't change.
Do we have a copy of his D? I didn't see that.
I've got.
I don't know that I have it.
And that subdivision, are there protective covenants in that subdivision?
I think that we looked into that and we didn't find any, right?
Yeah, I think based on our meeting, we had pulled some of the files from the town. We couldn't find any of the standards of private home occupations, which essentially what this application is about.
Did you check with the county?
Misfunctioning waters.
I mean, do you have the subdivision plans?
Yeah. Christina, you have?
I can make a list of things we want.
Really? But, you know, just to make sure there's no protective covenants?
Yeah.
In that subdivision.
I have a question, Christina. Is there a requirement for any sort of fire protection in that area? It's, what do you say is below the house? It's like?
Yeah, I mean, it's first floor, essentially.
Does it require a fire barrier?
I mean, there's fire separation, I imagine, because it's a garage area.
Right.
But I can look into it if you want.
Likely it does have a fire barrier.
Could be something is.
I would think so, yeah.
Something is specialized C block, C block patio, like you put around where you're working.
Correct, exactly.
And the other thing is, I think a while back, and I don't know, I guess we'd have to review the video minutes, it's something to see, but I thought that we required a stamp, a notarized stamp on these letters of authorization.
So you want that notarized?
Well, this one, this one's been notarized, evidently it was notarized, but there's no stamp. You know, there's no notary stamp.
That's what we put in our bylaws.
Yeah, and I think that, I think a couple more of these are coming before us to send to the same way.
Same way, yeah.
Misfunctioning water septic on the property.
Correct.
Will customers be interfacing with you at your property?
Not generally, no.
What about storage of vehicles?
Storage of like customer vehicles?
Customer vehicles.
Not on property, no. No, most of the time the way it works is going to the house, their, their house.
Yep.
Working out there, saying I go back and get a part or have to order a part. Everything stays there and then I just go home once I get it, go back out to location.
Okay. Can I get a clarification? Are we doing just the mobile licensing?
The mobile vendor, he's doing a home occupation for a mobile vending unit. I mean, he keeps, he keeps his supplies in the building, he runs it out of his home.
Okay, but that's not before us right now?
I'm sorry?
That's not before us right now, just the mobile part of it's before us right now or?
The home occupation.
It's all before us?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you would repair some at your, at that property?
It's possible, but it's very, like, I would say 98% of the business is not done there.
So you go on to site with somebody's motorcycle was, you pull it out, change the oil and, you know, take the oil and move it from the property and plastic jugs and stuff. All right, I see what you're talking about.
Yeah.
How much would you store, if any, there?
Like waste? Or waste.
You, the waste, whatever fluids?
Max, max would be like 55 gallons. It's 155 gallon room, which I never filled.
Okay.
Now, do you have any ordinances that speak to mobile businesses? I guess that's a no.
Well, it's not, it's the home occupation.
It's the home occupation.
Okay.
Like a locksmith or people who change a broken windshield, that sort of thing. Well, someone analogous and goes to people's property and performs it rather than at home.
So then my concern would be for your neighbors seeing broken down, not broken down, vehicles, golf carts, ATVs, motorcycles, waiting for parts, waiting for repairs.
Correct.
And they can accumulate.
I understand, that's what I'm saying. 98% of the work is not done.
Okay, can you see your house from the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we wanted to check on you?
Where would you?
You're going to see my stuff.
Where would you store those 2% of the vehicles?
They wouldn't be stored. If it was one of those deals, they'd be picking up, bringing to the house, they'd be in the garage, and then go back to their.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
So you wouldn't have like parts, vehicles around the property or anything like that?
No.
Okay. So this is a minor application?
Correct, yeah, this would be a minor application and really the bulk of it would be looking at the home occupation standards. You know, as we kind of walked through it a little bit, we kind of walked through each of the home occupation standards and all of them were pretty straightforward. The one thing that we did talk to the applicant about was technically there's that standard of not more than 20% of the floor area could be utilized for the business, and that's why he provided those, break down of the square footage and the sketches to kind of demonstrate that he meets that standard.
Would these, do as a home occupation require either a sidewalk or a public hearing?
I think this would be up to the board to decide, like we mentioned earlier a little bit with the minor applications, if this seems.
Basically, the same format.
Right.
We decide whether we want a public hearing or a sidewalk. The fees have been paid and anything we need to complete the application. So if we did that, we could tell this guy to come back next week. Really, we need to complete the application?
Yeah, from planning's perspective, the application is complete, so.
Anything to board?
I would just like to see the letter of authorization notarized, an actual notarized stamp, since you have the owner of the property, you know, giving permission to somebody else to operate out of there.
Okay.
And do we need to vote on any?
That's probably what you're saying. No, sorry, that was a property. No, I know, the authorization as well, getting that done. Right, sure.
What was the last question you asked?
Possessions.
No, not the rights.
Oh, yeah, okay, great.
No, the rights authorization.
Can I, look, are you the owner of the property?
No, it's my mother.
She would have the letter of authorization, that's what it, yeah, yeah.
I was going to make a motion if nobody had any other questions.
Regarding?
Regarding what we're requiring him to present to us.
Okay, go ahead.
I think Christina has something to add.
I'd just like some verification on the waste.
Sure.
Yeah.
Because in your narrative, you do talk about where you bring it, but I just want verification.
Yeah. Normally, normally there's a company that comes and pumps it out. If it's pure oil, it doesn't have break-through and stuff like that in it, they'll come and pump it. Usually you put in like a 250 gallon or whatever.
Yeah, I've worked with GafTech previously, they're guns.
And then you, so you'd get a slip on that. I would think that Christina would want a copy of that slip showing that it was disposed properly.
Yeah, I could supply that once it happened, but I'm not at the point of needing to dispose of oil.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I can get a letter like we're talking about, I just didn't, yeah, I didn't enough to, I couldn't get it between the timeframe and now.
Sure. That's an important side of it, though.
Yeah, fully understood.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we're pretty much good to go, but we require of the applicant a notified letter of, a notarized letter of.
Authorization.
Authorization, that you are indeed our agent. A copy of your D and a copy of the subdivision documents.
Yep.
They don't need a map, but we need to see if there's any covenants, protective regulations on that subdivision.
And a contract with a reputable company to come take care of the waste of.
Correct.
Second that. Second that.
Yes, I'll second that.
Second that, okay. All in favor?
Good.
Okay. I would also, I would like to have a hearing as well on this. Because it is a business of public hearing, so the neighbors can have a voice in this at least. Let them know what's going on. So I'd like to make that motion. Okay.
The second.
Okay, all in favor?
It's different.
Now, does that require notification of his abutters?
Yes, we have, the addresses are here, so we do that at our next meeting, essentially.
On December 14th?
Do we feel we need a sidewalk?
No.
Is that our next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're doing those notifications in-house now, right?
Yes.
And you're going to check on the fire barrier or whatever?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't need a sidewalk, do we?
I don't think so.
No. It's mostly Christina just checking on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The garage is under the house.
Yeah. But how do you feel, Paul?
What?
What do you think, Paul? Sidewalk or no?
I don't think we need a sidewalk, but it's up to you guys.
Okay, make a motion, we take a list to our next meeting where we will.
Do you want a motion on that and a sidewalk?
Yes.
Make a motion, we don't have a sidewalk.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
And the fees have been paid.
So I'll make a motion, we table this until our next meeting.
Very good.
For, to determine the completeness of the application and substantive review.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
You're getting better at that.
Say it quicker.
All right.
Thank you, Danny.
Determine it's complete? Yes, indeed, we're good. Yeah, thank you very much. Moving on to the next pre-application. This would be for 74 Safe Harbor Road. Pre-application for a proposed addition to an existing structure on a nonconforming lot within the shore land zone. Do we have, there we go.
We know the drill.
I'm still feeling right now.
Safe Harbor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Safe Harbor, yeah.
Tom and Mary Imagins.
Tyler Bell, ML9 Bill, representing for Tom and Mary Imagins. We have an existing non-conforming lot with a single family dwelling on it, approximately ninety or twenty square feet. They're looking at a four hundred thirty-two square foot addition and a hundred eighty-nine square foot debt extension to existing debt. We did have the copy surveyed and as you can see, it had substantial lot coverage. What we're proposing is to interchange the existing lot coverage of about thirty percent with this addition by removing other areas. We will not be increasing the amount.
So this is going between the residents and the garage?
Correct.
And the existing septic tank sits there?
Yes, so the septic tank when it's relocated, the field can be maintained, it stays in the same place.
Are you gonna, are you gonna put in a new tank or try to recover the old one?
The existing tank is actually only three years old.
Yeah.
It's just replaceable, we'll salvage that.
Does a, does a septic delivery, tank delivery company come and lift that out or are you gonna do that like with a backhoe or?
We may have a company end up doing that, just for sheer weight.
I guess the question would be, is somebody gonna inspect that tank after it's removed, make sure it's not cracked or?
Sure, yeah.
And that doesn't require an HHE two hundred?
It does.
It does?
So you had somebody inspect it already?
Yes, we had inspected and I've written from the septic designer, he gave us feedback on the existing tank and pool.
Okay, so I don't have, I don't have, I'm sorry. Okay. Do you know the distance between the addition and the garage?
I don't have that in front of me.
I'd like to see that.
Is this gonna cause any sort of erosion?
I mean, I, I think the grades on site are not, you know, super significant and I think another thing we could require would be like a formal erosion control plan type notes and details as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would make sense, that's, it's a lot more roof and.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Again, Mary's Safe Harbor Road.
It's off of Anderson Road, it's your first road.
Off Anderson.
Is the grade what, Steve?
Around the houses.
Public or private?
The, the road or the?
Safe Harbor Road.
I don't know.
I think it's a public, isn't it?
I think so too.
Probably down in that section.
It's off Anderson Road.
Yeah. Any idea where the grade is?
Around the houses, fairly minimal, that shows. But as you taper towards the water, it'll drop off.
Okay.
You can see the lines.
Are there any erosion control devices there right now? Is there any drip rack, anything like that?
Nothing in place.
And there isn't any erosion control problem at present?
Nope.
Now, the property is subject to the abudders' right to have a septic field?
Ah, yes.
Well, the field is an existing field, you're not touching that, right?
Correct.
Well, is it the field for his house and there's something marked, the abudders' proposed septic field?
I'm not sure why it says proposed, but that is existing.
Hmm?
That is existing.
So it doesn't affect the project.
Where is the well?
Down here. Drilled well, it says.
Okay. Oh, I got it, okay, thank you.
Troll house.
What's a troll house? I like that. Who wants a troll house?
I, I do not know.
Yeah, full makeup on the troll house.
Well, I see a troll under a bridge and he's scary.
I'd like to ask Christina what other numbers you're looking for between the garage and the new addition?
I just wanna see the distance because it'll require fire separation if it's under ten feet.
Okay. You talked five-eighths, like on the walls on exterior homes of the.
Five-eighths.
Double five-eighths or single?
I'm sorry.
Your fire, your fire protection in between, what, what does that require?
I'm gonna have to check on separate, uh, detached garage. I don't know if it's gonna change.
Two ways of five-eighths or just?
Yeah. I don't know if that, if it's changed by being, you know, detached.
Okay.
Anything else we need of the applicant?
Anything else?
The HHE, right?
HHE two hundred, yeah. Yes?
Yes.
I don't know, does it require an HHE two hundred?
Well, it requires the, he's got it here, it's the replacement tank.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, well, yes, okay. That, that would.
The relocation would be beyond the driveway area, so.
You have the letter from there? So it's, it's okay?
Out towards McDonald's House, septic tank relocated.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, on that, on that septic tank porch, is that the HHE two hundred form? But anyway.
There's another form for tank relocation, I'll put a number on it.
Okay.
I'll probably have to get that.
It says type of water supply, drilled well, dug well, other. The other is checked and then water is supplied by private water supply. So shouldn't it be the drilled or dug well? Do you know what type of a well there is there?
It's a drill well.
It's a drilled well?
It states drilled well on the survey.
Yeah, but on this, on this form, it sends other.
It could be an error from the septic designer.
That was gonna be my question, what's the other, rainwater?
Huh?
What's the other rainwater?
I don't know, well, pond water, right? Pumped down to the lake. That's what I was wondering.
So we need to verify that.
Yeah, verify that, yeah. Oh, yeah. Therefore, an HHE two hundred A form was prepared. Okay, that's what that is, HHE two hundred form, two hundred A form. And the other, the other question that I had was on the application, the property owner's signature, doesn't look like the property owner's signature. Cause we do have a sheet to whom it may concern, you know, a sheet giving, giving permission to you to represent, to represent the sheet. He, Jim Quinlan signed that and that signature doesn't appear to be anything like this signature under the property owner's signature. It almost looks like it says Tracy something or other under the.
Tracy is his wife. Tracy Quinlan.
Oh, is that his wife?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Could you clarify that, cause I didn't, you know.
Well, that needs to be notarized as well.
Yeah, that, yeah, that needs to be notarized too. This, this form right here? Needs to be notarized?
What form did you show?
This one. Yeah, yeah. I don't think I have anything else here.
I don't have anything else on.
Major, minor?
I think it's minor.
You don't favor that?
Because we have.
What?
Anything else, any other questions you think would be?
Well, we can just decide sidewalk, public hearing and make sure the fees are paid.
Okay. Take it as minor. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion, it's a minor project.
Yes.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty simple. I don't think it affects the property owner.
I'm gonna vote to go on this.
Okay. Okay, on sidewalk, we're voting. All in favor?
Yes or no?
Yes or no.
So you're gonna make a motion?
Yeah.
So someone has to make a motion.
Okay.
What did you just second?
It was a mine, Paul made a motion, it was a minor project.
So this is what we're voting on.
Let's finish that then, okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, seconded, all in favor? Minor project, okay? Any other motions? Yes.
Do we need a sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
Make a motion that we do not need a sidewalk.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Make the motion, we do not need a public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. That's pretty simple.
So we had the notarized authorization of representative document that we need and what else do we require?
We need the, yes, we need the notarized representative, we need the inspection report on the septic.
Do we need the property deed? Don't have property deed.
I think, I have that on my list.
Okay.
And, yeah, because we have to verify. The wife being on the deed.
Yeah, yeah. So deed as well. Show distances between the new building and the garage.
Yeah.
Uh, questions on fire protection, resolve that. And, and let's see.
Erosion control.
Yep, the well. Well, we had the HHE two thousand A, that we had a question on it, a well, I think, in terms of.
No, 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 cause that's just, that's just a tank, yeah, that's just a tank, tank move, move the tank is what that is.
And the well question in terms of what is it?
The, it states right on the plan that it's a drill well. But you need this form changed.
Right.
Change.
The HHE two hundred D form needs to be changed.
It's all beyond a hundred.
Okay, can I make a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion.
Did Paul have something? I said it's all beyond a hundred feet, right?
Correct.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we require that the HHE two hundred A form be changed to correctly identify the type of well, that the, also require of them that the notarized authorization of representation be notarized, that document. Make a motion that would require the deeds to be presented to us and show the distances between the addition and the existing garage, including walls and roof lines.
I'll second that motion.
Can we see the, did we vote? Did we have written down originally an erosion control plan? Do we want that or not?
It, it appears like the property is pretty flat without houses and the applicant saying that there isn't any erosion control problems at present, so I'm hoping it's not, except I don't think the rest of the board agrees with that.
All right, good, I'll pass it over.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
We need to vote.
Yeah.
So.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, let's have a motion to, with all of our pieces here.
Yeah.
All right, okay. As David stated, all the various parts of this, but in terms of notarized, in terms of septic report, in terms of distances between buildings, in terms of fire protection, in terms of the HHE two hundred A form, the deed.
I, I didn't do the fire protection because that's really a code thing.
Okay, all right. Take that out then, okay. Very good.
Well, it should show on the plan though, right? I mean, there should be an indication on the plan if it's, if that's needed, right?
He'll, he'll update it on the plans.
Okay.
Okay, by seconded motion.
I seconded it.
All right, all in favor?
If you want to add that, add it on, please, but I, I just figured that.
Yeah, it is, it is code. And Christina can take everything like so.
Okay, great.
Can you match a thousand tonight?
Yep.
So you have your next meeting, you know what you need to bring us?
Come back and make sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great. By the way, does anybody have a conflict of interest with this particular application? Nope, okay, good. All right.
I just think this is one cost I am also.
All right.
So if we have to make a motion, if we.
I make a motion that we table the.
Table, okay.
The Anderson Road project until our next meeting, at which time, providing he provides us all the documentation, we will accept the application as complete and begin substantive review.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, we are on to five over three. Sebago Road, pre-application for a proposed bunkhouse within the shoreline zone beyond the one hundred foot buffer zone. And you are?
I'm Ethan Bennett with Bennett Construction. The homeowner, James McIntyre, told me to tell you all that he wished he could be here. They had a, they live in Georgia, they have a family medical emergency, he was actually supposed to fly in this morning.
Okay.
And so, I'm representing him. I have an updated septic plan and another eleven by seventeen, it should be a little bit closer where everything's gonna be as far as just the plans.
We need, thank you, plan that shows the entire property.
Yep, that's.
I have a question for you.
Always.
I didn't see it in my package, so I wanna know if you guys did. It was the narrative explaining his twenty percent calculations.
For this project?
Yes, because I didn't see it in the packets, but I did.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, I hear that. It reminded me of what, ten points something.
Similar to that.
It's in the first page.
We're short about driveways, whether or not those are peruvious surfaces or something like that, is that the one you brought up?
Yeah.
And you'll see any of the landscaping stuff that you see on there, was Ted Carter getting a little fancy with the architect, none of that is actually happening.
So you're not cutting down any trees or anything?
They, they went a little, they paid Ted Carter to do some landscaping plans and realized how much the cost of Ted Carter is. And they said no.
Okay.
So it is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom bunkhouse. It is all unfinished on the inside of it. The only thing that we're finishing is the dividing wall between the bedroom and bathrooms, is to add a little privacy for going to the bathroom and sleeping and all that. So that is the only finished space in the entire thing, there's no kitchen. There's those two bathrooms and the rest is just bunk beds, sleeping space for their four grandkids.
Okay, that's good, that's what, that was my question, yeah.
Yeah, they, their grandkids come up with them.
Yeah, there you go.
And stay with them without their parents every summer. So they're trying to not have them be in the bedroom.
Have them in the master hall? They don't want four grandchildren.
I think it's more, I think some of it's mom too that doesn't want to stay, they wanna send the kids to there and they can stay in the bedroom from inside the house.
Don't have to break stuff in the unfinished room.
Some of us are there with grandchildren, we understand.
I've got four kids myself, so it's.
Oh, gosh.
Okay.
How big is the building and how many feet by what?
I believe it's twenty-two, I think he has the large, twenty-two by twenty-eight.
Twenty-two by twenty-eight, all right. It's not six hundred square feet, I have to.
Seventy, on an ADU? Is that what you're thinking?
He said twenty-four by twenty-two, right?
Six, I believe it's twenty-two.
Twenty-two by twenty-eight.
Twenty-two by twenty-eight.
That's probably gonna be what?
What's that?
Sixteen.
Six sixteen?
Six sixteen.
So it passes a building anyway in that, six hundred, right?
Oh.
Six hundred width, yeah.
Six hundred sixteen, yeah.
I thought it was seventy, seventy fifty for an ADU, isn't it?
It's an ADU. And it's gonna share the, what's, septic with the.
Yeah, well, it has its own pump system to pull the water up to it. Both houses get winterized every single year, so they're, they're, that'll get winterized right with it and it'll have its own kind of small electric hot water heater for the bathrooms and no heat, no heat source.
They're never gonna have heat in this building?
No. You don't want the kids to sleep in it.
No, that's true. It gets cold in the back, right?
Have, have, have we had a chance to calculate, uh, percentage of, uh, impervious surface on this lot?
Yeah, so there was a statement provided by, um, a registered landscape architect that had broken that down.
But she had, she seemed like she was unsure about the impervious surface as far as driveways and, and I'm assuming probably walkways and everything else goes, um...
It's a ten acre lot, right?
I'm just going to say, if you look at the size of the lot.
Oh, it is, it's a ten acre lot.
Huge.
Okay, all right, okay, yeah.
It's not, it's a one acre.
Did I, did I agree that there were six bunks going in here?
One of these circular things, actually, was it supposed to be?
As far as how many bumps, so I, I mean, I wouldn't think they...
Trees and big trees.
Most likely two grandkids going to get their own room, maybe one of them pairing up together. I, I'm not really sure about that.
Those circle things are trees, right?
On Ted Carter's plan there?
Oh, yeah. Add one bed in the building, then your existing home remains the same.
Three bedrooms.
Yes, I believe he uses all those as, like, proximity points to kind of work off of.
Like sheet A zero zero one shows a little bit better of an depiction or a drawing of it. But, yeah, those are trees there.
Yeah. And my guess is he uses those, it's kind of his own method of using them to kind of pull pinpoints off where it needs to be.
And so basically it comes down to you're not changing the existing home.
No.
And you're just, but, building a bunkhouse back beyond a hundred feet.
Yep.
All right, all right.
I just want to add the driveway too.
Yes.
The, the existing driveway, we're using the same material. We're just kind of leveling it and then taking the rocks that we have from our dig site and putting it on the outside of it.
And when it says property line, this is the road out here, right?
Back on the, so all the way...
The lot reaches the...
All the way back to here, that's Sebago Road there.
All right, so it has direct access to Sebago.
Yep.
I don't know. Doesn't show it, I mean, or it says property line is Sebago.
That's Sebago Road here, and then that's the water here. And as we scale up, then there's the roads up on this.
So your design flow is six hundred gallons a day?
Yep.
Is it a hundred and twenty gallons per bedroom?
Up to two hundred feet from Sebago Lake. Beyond two, and so, yeah, that would fall within it. Because it's within two hundred feet, right?
Yeah, so you, he took the...
So you've got seven hundred and sixty gallons of flow achieved, if I'm calculating right. You've got three eighty and three eight, three sixteen and three sixteen. Seven twenty. So you've got three bedrooms at a hundred and twenty gallons a day?
Yep.
Your, your plan says two bed, two bedrooms. Existing three bedrooms on the lower right-hand corner?
Yeah, number of units, too.
So you're off on those numbers, I think.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
Yes. We've, uh, if you run that first page?
Yeah, so...
I just want to make sure we look at the same.
Yeah, design, in the design flow section, lower right-hand corner.
So six hundred gallons a day based on
My, my sheet.
four A, is this thing?
Yeah, it said, it'll say A D U, right, there, Sebago.
Oh, yeah, so he...
Eight two bedroom, A D U.
So basically he mixed feeling good, even though I sent them the plan. So what I'll do is I'll have, um, but there is update this plan.
Surprise the property.
And...
Surprise is called an A D U.
Okay, good, good. So if my bedrooms is six to six?
There is six. So there's six bedrooms, there's three in the bunkhouse and three in the main house. And the septic designer, um, only put three in the main house, two in the bunkhouse, so...
Is this a new system?
No, we're adding to the existing system.
Oh, okay, okay, so, okay.
And we're at, we're putting a new tank in for the bunkhouse.
Okay.
And then we're adding...
Expanding the field?
Yeah, just expanding the field.
Okay.
So, and that way, and I think he puts in here two, we're expanding the field, but if we, even though they're only seasonal, they're only here for a few weeks out of the year, so it makes the existing field's fine. He said if we start to pull it away and it's not, then we'll replace the whole field.
Okay.
So this is an A D U?
Technically it's not.
It's not an A D U?
Yeah, that's right. Those are the ask, yeah.
And their thought was, why do our grandkids need kitchen? And so, they can, I mean, it's close enough to the existing house, they can run over it. It's just a place for sleeping.
Can I ask a question? In the middle, where it says disposable system to serve, it says multi, multiple family dwelling, number of units, two.
Yes.
So they're the, considering the main house, one and the bunkhouse, another?
Yes.
All right. With six bedrooms and a hundred and twenty gallons per bedroom, right?
Yep.
Yep.
So that's going to come out to seven twenty.
Yeah, he, that's what we were talking about before, he, for some reason, he thought, even though he had the building plans, that it was a two-bedroom.
Okay. But you're saying you're going to go with the existing theme if it's okay?
Yes.
Well, it says, it says existing three-bedroom dwelling plus new two-bedroom A D U at one twenty gallons per day per bedroom.
So we...
And this, that says it's going to be two bedrooms.
It should read new three-bedroom.
Then would have to be a design of seven hundred and twenty.
Again, he's adding on to the existing system, so...
So you're adding on to the sys, the new, the existing system to accommodate the extra?
Yep.
I mean, that, that, but all of that correct information needs to be, I mean, that needs to be on it.
She's going to get it, Carl.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, um, send a message tonight.
Okay.
And the other thing too, and then it's year-round, I mean, many information. And then this is disposable system. It says current use, year-round. Is it present the year-round?
Existing house is technically year-round, it has heat and it's insulated and they just, they don't come...
They don't use it, okay.
Yeah. So they winterize it every year.
Yep.
Okay.
So in theory, this could be winterized and used as a year-round dwelling too?
Um, with no insulation.
Well, I mean, later on.
Oh, if they, if they ever wanted to, they could, but...
They're going to come back to us.
Yeah, so all the walls will be wide open besides...
And then it could be used as an A D U.
It'd have to come after it.
Well, yeah, needed, we need a kitchen, okay.
Yeah, it's going to come back here.
Yeah. Get it back here.
Just get it back to us.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah.
Good job.
All right, so basically the same thing, fees have been paid. We decide if we want a, uh...
Fees paid?
Sidewalk and...
At this point, okay.
Public hearing. And I make a motion, we don't leave them.
So, um, are there any changes, uh, that we need to see going forward? You need to say a new...
H H G two hundred updated.
Okay.
We need the notary, notarized authorization of representative approval. Authorization for...
I got to get that straight.
Yeah, we need to, what's that called?
You need the deed?
Deed.
Do we?
Do we should, yeah, to be part of the record.
Yep.
Do we need a notarized update on the, on that sheet?
So two things?
What?
Two things?
Three things.
Deed?
The H H H two hundred, the authorization and the deed.
Yeah, letter of authorization, yeah, notarized letter of authorization.
I make a motion that we...
One, one other thing. Um, the, uh, the impervious surface where the, where the architect wasn't sure as to whether or not, uh, should that number be correct or do we not care? Is it ten, ten percent, ten point six nine percent on our tag, or is that, is that close enough?
Yeah, I mean, either way, it meets the standard. Um, and this is, you know, not to get too far into the ordinance changes type of thing, but it's something, you know, we could consider under like clerical, so we can kind of clarify.
I just didn't know if it had, if an ac, more accurate of number had to be...
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah. Okay, so you, go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion that we require of the applicant an u, an updated H H G two hundred to represent the proper number of bedrooms and flow. Uh, also a notarized letter of authorization and a copy of the deed.
Seconded then.
I'll second it, yeah.
Good, all right, all in favor? Make a motion, we table this until our next meeting, at which time we will determine completeness of...
You want to do motions or take a motion? We don't have a sidewalk or a, uh, public hearing.
Well, I think, oh, oh, yeah. So do we want to have a sidewalk?
I think not.
We'll just make the motion not to have one?
Okay. Sorry, didn't hear you. Okay?
I'm not hearing.
All right. All right, so, uh...
I second it.
We have a motion for, uh...
Second it.
For not having a sidewalk.
Are you making the motion and seconding?
I was making a motion, I neither have a public hearing
Okay.
nor a sidewalk.
Okay, okay.
Do, second.
Okay, all in favor?
I have a motion to table till next, huh?
Thank you, yep. Make a motion that we table this matter until our next meeting, at which time we will determine completeness of application and begin substantive review.
Seconded then.
All in favor?
Look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I think that gives us a better work.
Can have a little fun around here.
Especially in our minutes.
Yeah.
Where we're supposed to be.
Yeah.
And obviously a minor.
Yes, definitely a minor.
Minor project. And, uh, let me, let me ask about this.
Do you want to vote on that?
No.
And, uh, does anybody have a conflict of interest regarding this particular?
I live two streets down, does that make a difference?
I don't, I'm not hearing anything.
Okay.
No, no, I don't have a conflict.
All right, yeah. That's making the first thing I do.
All right, so, next project up is, uh, twenty-two Sebago Road. Pre-application for a proposed demolition of an existing structure and deconstruction of a new single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot.
Yes. Hello?
How are you, James Bellis?
All right, James.
Representing Judy McGuire and Liz...
Okay.
I have this, uh, Jim wanted me to plot the septic system and, yeah, everything. So I, um, did that for everybody.
Is this in addition to what we already have, do you know?
Um, I, he wanted me to plot the new septic system.
Okay.
Um, the driveway, he wanted a couple more dimensions from the line, the house.
Is the well on here?
Huh?
Is the well here?
Uh, it's a point, it's on there.
I see it, yeah.
This is point.
Yeah.
Maybe a copy of the, and the, he says this is where the well is going to be well, septic. It's going to be a copy of the deed.
And this is more than two hundred and fifty feet from the lake?
Yeah, we, we looked at that when we were...
Yes.
It's like, it's like three fifty.
Okay. Thank you.
The middle of my house is two fifty. Because I had to measure it to cut down trees in the backyard. Done.
So basically putting the same...
Where's the pre with the currently existing building?
That's what's shown on this plan here.
This is the curb.
Correct, yeah.
Where is the new one you want to put on?
Right on top of it.
Right on top of it.
Exactly the same dimensions all around?
Yeah. Uh, we might be definitely losing the, the patio shrinking on the back and gone, you know what I mean?
And the deck?
The oil tanks getting, taken care of and gone.
Okay.
Uh, we're getting rid of these little concrete walkways.
So you're not increasing the square forty to the building?
No. No, okay.
It's a type, it's a type lot.
You're not extending it out any closer to any boundaries?
No. No, it's basically, the only thing that's getting a little bit, see the little elf in the front of the house? That, we're just squaring that up.
Yep.
So it's twenty-eight by forty. So basically the, they were, um, going to lift the house, put a foundation under it and then tear the second floor off and try to, of the campers. I think once we get it up, we'll need way too much work underneath because it's right on the ground.
Yep.
Still foundation, so we're going to put a new foundation, four-foot crosswalls. And insulate all that.
It'll be half base, I think.
Yeah, crawl space.
Crawl space.
Yep.
Do we, do we know where the neighbor's well is, um, across Ossepe Street?
Uh, the lady didn't, she kind of had an idea that it was, um, behind her, um, shed, so it was like eighty feet away or something like that.
Do we know what type of well it is?
Huh?
Do we know what type of well?
I think it's a point.
It's a point, yeah.
What do you mean by a point?
A driven point?
A point is, you drive in the ground and it...
A teakin?
No, driven well point.
Driven well point.
Driven point, you never heard of it?
What do you do with that?
Screen on the bottom of it and you just beat it down into the...
He uses, hopefully you hit a wet spot when you, when you put it down and then it sucks water up through these screens in the point.
Mm-hmm.
That's all you're there?
That's going to be sufficient to handle the water in camp?
Yes.
Yes.
You've been using it for years?
Yes.
Got an indication of gallons per minute or gallons per minute, one?
No, we've never had an issue with, yeah, I...
I mean, it's, I know it's three feet into the water.
Oh, it is.
I'll find out, how far down does it go? It's probably eight feet deep.
Eight feet, you're able to get water from an eight-foot device?
We're right over the aquifer.[1657.14]
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah, they're very close to.
Unlimited water, as long as the water table stays up, right?
Yeah.
As long as you got water, it's good.
Do you, do you ever have a problem with, with dry season, though?
This house is going to have standard kitchen and toilets and everything else, right? You believe that it provides sufficient water?
Yeah, I mean, that was something that we talked about. They had a, it was like a pre, pre-application with Christina and I. We discussed this information. It also seemed feasible to us.
Is there some documentation you can provide that would support that?
Yeah, one of the things that we did talk about and that he did provide was the information for the, the septic system. That was contained within the application. The other thing, it was a little tricky to see, but this extra plan is really helpful to show what the existing conditions are with where the decks and patios and additional concrete is around the existing structure. And it's a little difficult to see, but on their cover sheet with their proposed plans, you can kind of almost make out each of those lines, what the existing conditions are. And for us during our initial review with the applicant, we wanted to make sure that the newly proposed wasn't increasing, you know, the existing lot coverage or square footage. And like you mentioned, he's really squaring off the building, so that's really dealing with new. If you look at the amount that he's taking away from there with the, the deck and patio, it would, it would complete a lot less than it's.
Okay. So, so you're building the building exactly the same spot that it's in right now?
Yes.
Um, is, is there any, is there any reason not to move it back to the 25-foot mark?
Um, I think they got 13 feet on the back line.
David. Yeah.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah.
It says 15.
It's 13, 10, and then 14. It's just a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, people come here.
Well, they targeted the road setback here. We want 14 to be acceptable in the Austin Street.
Why not shift it? Why not move it forward? Yeah, shift it, shift it so that it meets sideline setbacks and road setbacks of 25 feet if we grant that, which we would grant it anyway, probably.
What, by making changes?
Well, because you can't, you can't go any closer to the room.
All they want to do is tear it down and build, and build in the same.
Make it the way it is.
Make it better than what they have.
Yeah, don't make it more complicated.
No, no, I was just wondering. That's what we did, kind of did with the other one. They, they.
Adjusted it a little.
What's the setback, the standard setback?
But this is, there's no room down there to adjust.
Yeah, not important. All right, yeah, all right.
Well, actually, you could take the whole thing and kind of move it this way and this way. Remit the setbacks, but it's already on a pre-existing site and they don't want to.
Right.
It's been there for 159,000 years, it's good.
Yep.
The language in the ordinance does say you can rebuild on the same spot.
Yep.
He's not required.
Right.
I'm good.
Yep. Okay.
I was only asking, I wasn't.
I know, but let's not get it complicated.
Okay. There actually are improvements in terms of rebuilding some of that concrete walkway.
Openings improvement.
Plus opening up the space.
So what we'll need is.
Did you read the narrative?
Copy of the deed, I'd love to see, because that should be in the package anyway.
It should have come to you.
What else, just the copy of the deed?
Yeah, I think it said it.
Was it the email?
I think it was in the email.
I might be on the phone.
That's all I can think of. Some sort of documentation that says that the well is sufficient, because this is the only thing in the little.
The well has been there.
I'm not saying it isn't, but some sort of, some sort of documentation that says it's sufficient.
Would you please write a piece of paper that you've had sufficient water to supply down there for the last 50 years? I mean, seriously, right? That's what you want, documentation? It would be them writing a letter to say.
What would the documentation be?
I mean, yeah, it could be as simple as that. I mean, I don't, in cases of like complete new builds, I mean, there, it could be a lot more complicated, but in this scenario where it's an existing structure and they're improving it, you know, I.
Well, I guess, I, it would be sufficient to me to have professional staff say they, they're comfortable with it.
And they want to make it, you're keeping it in the family, you're going to, you're going to be a year-round home.
No, it's never.
It's not going to be rented, it's not.
That's what I'm saying, it's.
My concern is that, for whatever reason, if this water system is sufficient in a definite situation, because they don't have water, so that's the only other concern.
Do you know, does anybody know if it's sand and gravel aquifer, when you drove the point in, did it just drive right down?
It was a hand dug.
Yeah. So it's a sand and gravel aquifer and you hit the water table at what, eight feet, you said, or something?
That's, yeah.
It may have been a little deeper, but it's essentially, it looks like a pencil. We dug it.
Well, David dug a foundation and he could only go so deep and he got about six feet.
Okay, so you're, so you're in like a sand and gravel. Unlimited water, yeah, you never.
You have to demonstrate that capacity and, and to get an occupancy permit, so.
Yeah.
They can't demonstrate that capabilities within well, right? They will not get an occupancy.
So what are you requiring to demonstrate that they can get that?
I mean, when I go, the water needs to run. I don't regulate wells, but what I will check into is the proximity of the leach field to the point, because I'm not familiar with points. And they're asking me for a variance on that.
Yep.
So I'll figure on if that's safe.
Yeah, the other thing too, there's a state database as well that provides maps that has the sand and gravel aquifer information on there, and they'll tell you that information as well, so.
The whole of Long Beach, David, is sand.
Christina, what is the, the state's limit on that? Does that have to go to the state?
No, I can reduce down to 60 feet.
Okay.
Anything below that, I have to send it to state.
Okay.
How long ago was the, was the septic system put in?
Say that again.
How long ago was the septic system put in?
It, it, oh, approved or put in?
Yeah, approved, you know?
Just doesn't have a septic system right now, that's what we're.
Okay, so you're putting in a new one, so the distance from the septic to the well is different now because of the.
Yeah, there's going to be a leach field now and it's going to be 60 feet from the point. I'm not familiar with points as a water source.
This says 86.
I get 86.
86.
No, I'm sorry, did I look at the wrong number?
And the point I was trying to make is the new, the new septic system, the new leach field, you can be closer to the water source from what it was in the past. Before it was always had to be 100 feet.
But the neighbor's well is 60 feet. You said that's a point, right? Also, yeah.
Neighbors is 60 feet?
I think it's 65 is over.
Have they given you a variance?
Well, that's what I'm looking into.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. It's the village, I mean, it's so, we're trying to make it better, so.
Yeah. I guess, I guess the other question is, so you're going to put in a full foundation?
No.
Nope.
Frostwell?
For a frostwell.
Frostwell, okay.
Crawl space.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Going to have a cement floor.
No, I was just wondering, because you indicated that the ground wasn't, it's like, I go for a full foundation.
No, we're probably digging around.
They have an heated swimming pool in the basement.
Okay.
So they'll have new concrete floor in it.
Okay. Okay.
Supposed to be all rigid insulation on the inside of the four-foot crosswall with two-inch all the way around.
Yeah. Fast improvement, yeah, okay.
Yeah, way. Insulation, instead of two-by-four walls probably and two-foot on center.
Well, that's really, that narrative, it's like, how'd you guys stay in there?
But you guys are talking about raining it down for the winter, right?
Yeah, we usually, we usually want it something.
But they want to feel like I'm up in the winter now and go snowmobiling.
So I have three things.
I have it all.
Yes.
So one will be a notarized letter of authorization if you are going to be their representative next week, or if you're going to be here, I guess we don't need that.
Correct. When, when do you need to be?
Next month.
Next month again?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
We just got to notarize that.
Yeah, if, if you're not going to be here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, October, is it the seventh or the 14th?
14th.
We're going to need the deed.
It's just.
If it isn't here, resend it, please. And we will also require proof that the well, septic clearance is legal between your well and the neighbor's well, so that has to be located.
The leach field and the neighbor's well. It's, I mean, I'm sure it's legal, but I, I'm not familiar enough with points to sign up that variance without, you understand what I'm saying, right? I need to know that it's safe.
So how would we vary?
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to get in touch with the state side about it over here and have them give you guidance.
Yeah, because Norman just put this in, he's the soil engineer, so I would, he would have the variance right in my eyes.
You just put it in?
When he designed the septic system?
Right, but I have to approve the variance to the point. I don't understand, I don't really, I'm not familiar with them.
So typically we get away with that because the well is 150 or 500 feet deep, so it's not even close to the septic system. But where it's a point, it's only eight, 10, 12 feet deep, two lengths of pipe, um, that could cause issues.
I'm just going to get going.
But I know, you know how a septic system works, right? I follow engines, the water's clear and clean.
I'm only going by the rules. I don't, you know, that's all I do. That's all the rules.
That's, that's if it's functioning properly or your neighbor isn't functioning properly, because we don't, we don't.
David, David, David.
No, no, I just.
Don't care about the neighbors.
No, oh.
So they're probably.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that nitrate levels, you know, you're dealing with just nitrate trade levels and especially before you're dealing with nitrate levels, so, you know.
Our goal is to keep the town of Sebago out of legal trouble. Our goal is to keep the town of Sebago out of legal issues.
Gotcha.
So, that's fine.
So deed and some evidence concerning the.
Four things are in motion, right?
I had three. I had notarized letter of authorization, the deed, and clarification from.
Leach field to well?
Leach field to neighbor's well.
Yeah.
Okay. And we need, do we need to see the variance for the point as well?
Um, variance is in the septic design, it's just something that I approve.
Okay.
If you sign it, it's.
Right.
Yeah. Approved by the L P I.
So I'm going to make a motion that we ask the applicant at the next meeting to bring a notarized letter of authorization. Uh, if you have already, please send again your deed, so we may have copies.